Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask for is agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, staff have no changes to present this evening?
Okay. Now we'll move on to public forum. In the interest of time, how many of you plan on addressing the council this evening? Two of you. Go ahead and make your way to the podium. Give us your name, address, and you'll be given five minutes.
Five minutes? Hardly get warmed up in five minutes. My name's Ryan Linton. I live at 1417 Chestnut Court here in Halsted. Wanted to talk a little bit about the golf cart ordinance that was passed for old settlers right before old settlers. And sorry, I don't have the exact ordinance with me. Just wanted to talk a little bit about unintended consequences. So I'm sure everyone on this board voted for that ordinance, if you did, I didn't look back at record, as a case of public safety. That seems to be the general idea of public safety. But when you look into that deeper and an exact circumstance that happened to a young gentleman who was visiting my house that evening, the consequence actually wasn't for the what happened. So the young man, along with my son, followed the rules, visited me at the burrows. I was bartending for Christmas for kids at the Sal's Legion that night. So while we were there, this young man noticed there was a group of people that needed a ride home. They had drank too much, could not drive home. They knew it. We knew it. He volunteered. He was not driving his own golf cart. He volunteered to take these people home. He was unaware of the ordinance, which is not an excuse for for not for for breaking it. I absolutely understand that. But he drove them home. On his way home, he was pulled over for because of the ordinance. They had one extra person on that golf cart, at which time he was given a ticket that he came to find out was $250, goes on his permanent driving record, has to show up for court, has to come back from college. He's a freshman in college at Hutch Juco. And that's where I where I see this as an unintended consequence. I don't believe in public safety, that it was meant to prevent or hinder a young man from helping out a group of people to try to get home who are inebriated and obviously causing themselves and the public danger. So while I appreciate what the the board, the council had in mind with the law and public safety, and I fully endorse that, I do believe that we were a little short sighted in seeing the entire picture of what this could cause. And and for doing the right thing for public safety, he was he was punished for it. Did he break the rule? Yes, he did break the rule. I'm not here to argue that. Just wanted to, if there's anything this council can do, to maybe be lenient with this young man for for the circumstances he was in, I would appreciate that. And that's really all I have. Short and sweet and to the point, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next. Yep. My name is Joey Bryant. About kind of same deal, the golf carts. I'm curious, do you guys have the documentation on the research you guys did on the new safety policies that you put in place? Like maybe DOT checks? Did you get with DOT and find out as far as the seat belts, the strapping the kids?
There was several different avenues of information the council looked at, and one of them was reviewing ordinances from other cities. And I can tell you, I've personally looked at other cities' ordinances, and they're they're across the board different.
Okay. But but no DOT or anything like that? Any?
Sam did some initial.
Yeah, the seat belts required on the car on the golf carts are DOT approved, yes.
No, no, no. I asked, did the what the DOT had. I didn't ask if the seat belts themselves were DOT approved. I asked if you had DOT recommendation or?
Well, a golf cart is not a legal street vehicle, so there's probably not a lot of the information on on DOT.
Okay. So what about the so then in saying that, do you guys have a standard on how you put the seat belts on theirs on there?
Yeah, DOT attachments.
Okay. So then, I guess, it seems how you guys took it upon yourselves to do all this. If by chance there is a rollover accident, the who's completely liable for that? Because golf carts aren't made to be flipped over.
Be the driver of the vehicle. State what you have to say. You can ask the questions. We can take that up in another meeting or whatever. Those are things to consider.
The the one thing I want to point out is ordinance 1298 was originally passed January 13th, 2020. And it was printed in the newspaper March 26th of 2020. That's when the ordinance was adopted. There has been zero changes to that ordinance.
And I'm sorry, I don't know the ordinance, but the with the seat belts and all the stuff?
You didn't read it?
I don't know where to find it. I'll be honest with you.
It's on the city's website.
No, I looked. I couldn't find it.
It's there. But that's when the original ordinance was adapted. Now, the council did make exceptions for old settlers. And I believe those exceptions were printed in the paper on July 29th, 2021. And the window for those exceptions was between 6:00 PM, August 12th through 6:00 PM on August 15th. So Thursday through Sunday was those exceptions window for the exceptions to the ordinance, which basically I think the main exceptions were you didn't have to have your car registered, you didn't have to have insurance on it, and you didn't have to have the slow moving sign. But all the other rules were in effect.
Okay. That's all I got?
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Counsel, anybody else want to weigh in?
No, not at this time.
Sam? Well, I'm going to weigh in because there are some options here. Brad, you're going to have to correct me if I'm incorrect here. But I believe Kansas State Statute number 14 dash 310, where it says the mayor shall have power to remit fines and forfeitures and to grant reprieves and pardons for offenses arising under the ordinances of the city. But the caveat is, it says by and with the consent of the council. So I'm going to put this out there for an option. Counsel, if you would like to give this young man a break because he's a college kid and probably can't afford that fine, I'm going to give you the opportunity.
So what was this ticket for?
Too many passengers.
Too many passengers on it? Okay. And so I'm understanding this correctly, at the time that this event occurred, the individual was basically chauffeuring personnel that were inebriated at the time to their homes to keep them from driving.
Unintendedly. So he showed up with my son to come see how I was doing because I was bartending at the Legion that night.
Yeah.
So when he saw when he saw others that could possibly be driving, we intervened and he intervened and asked them if they needed someone to drive their car for them home.
Okay.
And so my son was following him to take him back when when that occurred.
Too bad they couldn't have both taken a car that was legal transportation. I'm just saying.
A lot of shoulds, right? Yeah. In his mind, should have just said, forget about it. I'm not taking the risk.
Well, hindsight's always 2020. And you know, the the fine schedule for the offenses on golf carts are set pretty high as a deterrent because we didn't want any problems. I I think this is an exceptional case where the young man was trying to do the right thing. And I agree. I don't think he should be held to the full extent of what the ordinance is under the circumstances. So I'm giving the council the option if they want to do something.
I'm willing to base based off of the circumstances that's been presented to I'm okay with the with dropping it.
Would that require a motion, Brad?
Well, I'll make a motion based off of the circumstances that's been presented with regards to the case against the the ticket that was observed that was given during the old settlers of 2021, that it be suspended.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion in a second to suspend this one ticket for old settlers for this particular young man. All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Hang on a second, Ed. Go ahead, Ethan.
I believe in order for this to go through, you're going to need the ticketed individuals' like full name and all that so we can match it to our municipal court records. Brad, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
And probably should amend if you're going to amend to indicate that you're commuting in terms of the the ticket itself, and that'll do away with the fine. Not really suspending it. Suspending it would suggest it's still out there and just being suspended for an indefinite period of time. This instance, you're going to commute the the entire citation.
Okay. Do you have a citation number for us, chief?
I do.
Here it is.
May I see that?
And I'm guessing this young man's name is on it?
Uh, yeah, it's hard to read, but it's in there.
Can you read it, Mike?
It's Austin Brian E. Baben.
Okay, I will make a motion to commute the ticket on based off of the terms of the ticket from Austin.
Brian E. Baben.
Brian E.
E. Baben.
E. Baben.
Yes.
Motion. You might state that ticket number for the record.
Uh, ticket number 009704.
Second. We have a motion in a second to commute this for this young man. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are you going to vote, Mr. Foreman?
Well, I feel it's something that should be before a judge, and I fully sympathize that it would be something.
That's not the question here. I asked you for a vote.
And I'm making a statement.
And I'm running the meeting.
And the the issue was probably beyond.
If you don't start paying attention to me running this meeting, I will have you removed.
Is it a political move?
No, I will have you removed if you continue to cause problems. So I'm asking for your vote. Are you yea or nay? Motion carries.
Nope, you don't have a quorum.
Brad?
We've convened with a quorum, so you have one at this point still.
So we have a quorum.
It's unprofessional.
I don't care what you think, Sam. Have a seat. So that motion's going to pass. Thank you for trying to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
And we're going to move on our meeting. Nobody else is here to address the council in public forum? Okay. Next thing is unfinished business. Nope, we got to ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda for August 23rd, 2021 as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to unfinished business. We have none this evening, so we'll move on to new business. First thing is a funding request from Halsted Community Foundation. And we have representation here.
We do. Hello, I'm Ashley Bridgeman. I am the new director of the Halsted Community Foundation. It is truly my pleasure to be here tonight to request funding for the community foundation. So thank you very much. Really, what I want to begin with is by thanking the Halsted City, all previous mayors and council members for your and their instrumental role in establishing the foundation. We really do have a very unique relationship in the community foundation world, and your gifts throughout the years have allowed us to have such great impact here in Halsted. Our our partnership continues to be vital to the work that we do to ensure that the needs of Halsted residents are met for many more generations to come. So I'm going to go through several numbers tonight. I know in the past, the reports have been centered on grants, but I really want to talk about what story the numbers tell and what that impact looks like. So just bear with me. I'm going to try to try to make it as as quick as possible. Our collective fund balance or assets under management are $1.25 million for the Halsted Community Foundation. That is a significant growth. Since 2010, its inception, we have granted $343,000 in grants and scholarships for programs, initiatives, and students who live here. This year, we will give $8,900 in competitive grant funding through the Kansas Health Foundation Fund and the Impact Fund. And this is a big one. You guys are really going to like this one. In the past 12 months, CKCF has returned 22% on investment. So, yeah. Going to give a little bit of a history for for you all. The city of Halsted helped establish the foundation with a $10,000 operating gift in 2010. So in all the years, but one, those dollars have gone into the Impact Fund. So as a total number, the city of Halsted has given to the community foundation $155,000 in gifts. That is a significant amount of money. And we'll talk a little bit about what that really means for the for the community of Halsted here in just a minute. But $120,000 of that has gone into our Impact Fund. So the Impact Fund, kind of as a reminder, is the fund from which we award our grants every year that directly support projects that benefit all all residents of Halsted and really make it the best, biggest little city in Kansas. We have been able to give a total of $30,000 back to the community through this fund since its inception. But here's the number I want you to pay attention to. So if you really haven't, like, none of this has sunk in, which I'm sure it has, this is the one I want you to to really focus on. The current balance in the Impact Fund is $193,000. Okay, so given what we know about endowments, if we leave this fund alone, don't give to it, take the distribution off of it every year in the amount of 3% to 5%, but don't give for the next 50 years, this fund will be well over $600,000 and could give well north of $1 million back to the city of Halsted for projects and things such as that, depending on market performance. That assumes an 8% return with a 5% distribution, so about a 3% growth in the fund every year. So I just want you to take a minute and dream about what that kind of money can do for Halsted in the next 50 years. Then I want you to pat yourselves on the back for having the forethought and the foresight to give this gift back to the city of Halsted. So you are truly planting the seed of the tree that your great grandchildren and grandchildren will play under someday. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. In all the years but one, and and we're kind of cycling around back to that, HCF has requested that the gifts from the city go into the Impact Fund. But in 2012, HCF requested that the $15,000 be applied to their operating fund. I'm assuming that at that time, they were still new and growing, and maybe even were hiring a director at that time, but I don't have the history for that. But that's just kind of what my assumption is. And once again, in 2021, we find ourselves operating at a budget shortfall. It seems very natural to me that this would be the year that that would happen. We've had a very difficult year with COVID being one on one with our donors and building those relationships. And we have had quite a lengthy period of time without a director doing the work of the foundation. So nearly about a year for that for that time period. So therefore, we are asking to apply $5,000 in support to the operating fund in 2021 and to apply the remaining $10,000 to the Impact Fund endowment balance. We want to continue to grow the Impact Fund in Halsted and get that number as high as we can to to have as much impact as we can. Now, I will speak on behalf of all of our board members when I say that we want to continue to be good stewards of the gift that the city provides to the community foundation. So we are currently in an awareness campaign. I I'm new to Halsted, and this is a new role for me, and it's been very beneficial to attend awareness type of events where where people are. But in the coming year, we want to go into a development phase where we reengage donors and volunteers, call on new donor prospects, and then we seek out funding streams outside of Halsted for projects in Halsted. And these are all advantages of having a part time director, the role that I am very happy to fulfill and also to work for Halsted. So I do briefly want to address the city's strategic plan. There are a few projects listed in the plan that address quality of life for residents in Halsted, such as parks improvement or development, modernizing and improving the ball diamonds, expanding sidewalks, finishing walking trails, and then improving communications with residents. So these are all projects that we could fund through grants, either through our competitive grant cycle or with a formal request to our board. We could reserve discretionary funding to help you meet your goals. And I saw that that was in that goal also. So I was very, very happy to see that we were a part of your plan, and we can certainly help you fulfill that. For some of the bigger projects listed in the four remaining goals, and I mean, even in in goal two, we can establish a pass through fund and partner on a fundraising campaign to help raise money where taxpayer dollars or government funding fall short. These are just a few of the things that we can do, and it really is what the community foundation is here to do. We are here to be a leader and a convener and to help make Halsted the best place to live through private and hopefully private public partnerships. And this is the value of our partnership to you. So I really hope that those conversations can start happening in the coming year, and because I know that together we can do more. So that concludes my time with you. I appreciate your consideration of our request, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can, and I will find answers if I can. So.
Thank you, Ashley. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I'd like you to recognize your current board.
Sure. Ethan Reimer sits on our board. Marcy Carr is our chair, Dr. Ron Berry, Ron Evans, Tessa Windling. We just brought Mark Deno on to the Board of Directors, as well as Katie Schoenhoff. I don't know if if you are aware of her, and I'm sure there's somebody I'm forgetting. Is there somebody I'm forgetting? Pardon me if I have not spoken your name and I am forgetting you. Corey Harrington, yes, thank you very much. Very involved in in starting the foundation and and doing a lot of work to promote us. So, yeah.
Certainly got some good talent on that board.
Yes.
Good job. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate everything that you do, especially for the city, because I believe you guys helped with the funding for Eddie, I think? No? There was something that they helped with. I can't remember what it was. It's been a while.
Okay.
It's been a while back, I think.
Was the AEDs.
AEDs, that's what it was.
Control cars.
Yep.
Wonderful.
Yep. Awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So Ethan, do we need a motion?
Uh, yes.
I'd make a motion to approve a $15,000 grant to fund the Halsted Community Foundation, $5,000 to the operating fund, $10,000 to the Impact Fund.
A second.
Have the motion in the second to approve this donation to the community foundation. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign. That motion carries. Next on the agenda is consideration of 2022 Budget Public Hearing and our Revenue Neutral Rate Hearing Notice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have in the packet the notice that will need to be published in the paper per state statute, and the recently passed revenue neutral rate of this past legislative session sets both of those hearings for September 13th at 7:00 PM. So they'll correspond, and we'll put them in the agenda of the council meeting. First, you'll have the Revenue Neutral Rate Hearing, and then you'll follow that by the General Public Hearing on the budget. And at this point, the rate that was in there, and it's the same as was discussed in the Budget Work Session, setting the city mill rate at 76.89 mills, which is the amount of ad valorem taxation being sought is 1.1, sorry, $1,131,906. And at this point, once this is published, you can adopt a budget that has a lower mill rate or a lower ad valorem tax value, but you cannot adopt a budget that would be higher than that. So.
So do we need action on this item? I mean?
Yeah, you want a motion to approve publication of that notice and that proposed tax rate.
I'd make a motion to set public hearing for the proposed 2022 budget for the city of Halsted on Monday, September 13th, 2021, 7:00 PM. Authorized publication of notice and proposed 2022 budget summary.
Second.
Have the motion in a second to set this public hearing and the Revenue Neutral Rate Hearing, the budget public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries. Now you can go to work on that, Jared. Uh, next item on here is consideration of assistance to firefighters grant AFG award. I believe Jim is here to address the council with this this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Received word last week. I, grants move slowly in the in the FEMA world. We applied for this basically last year at this time. This was just part of several that we always apply for. Some of them you get, some of them you don't. So, but we were fortunate enough to to be selected this time. One of the questions, the very first question on when you get your award letter, and I think you have a copy of it in there, is that you have to get approval. You have to accept the award or not accept it. And so that's why I'm here today, to make sure that it's okay that we accept it, and then we can move forward on. Everything on a FEMA grant has to be bid out, at least a couple bidders, which is standard policy anyway for the city. So, but before I can do any of that, I've got it all ready to go. I just got to hit the button. And I but I need your approval.
What do you intend to use the grant for, Jim?
Oh, it says several things on here. It's reinforcing some of the equipment that we had in that plan that we looked at last week during the work session. We're going to to add a couple pieces of extrication equipment that we that we are just replacing. And then we are adding stabilizing struts, which is something we've never had in the past. Any type you work around large machinery, you know, in a farming community, construction, whatever it may be, these struts are a lifesaver if you need them, basically. They're made to set up and stabilize if you have somebody trapped under a piece of equipment or in something so it doesn't move. Number one is for the firefighter's safety and as always, the 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 patient or the victim that's in there.
Are these battery operated and kind of tie in with your other extrication tools?
Yeah, exactly. That's the the rage of the age nowadays is to go away from hydraulics, the electric tools, and a battery operated style is is not new, but it's fairly new. Within the last five years, it's really escalated as far as the quality and the length and and things of that nature.
If you haven't seen those, counsel, they're pretty impressive.
The airbags, the airbags that I tell you how old the airbags are. I got them the very first year I come here, that we have in on hand. And usually, a set of airbags is is really.
Civil War?
Yeah, is really only good for 15 years. So they age out. And whether you use them once or whether you use them 100 times, it's it's like a set of tires. Eventually, they'll wear out. The other thing that we are asked for was another thermoamplification camera. We replaced one that we had. Sounds like we're going out again. And but we have another one to replace, so we put it in there because it falls in the same kind of line of work. So that's basically what we're planning on doing. It's $44,000 worth of stuff when the grant is total, 44.9, to be exact. The federal share of that is 42,761.90. And the city's 5% share of that is 21,000 or 22,138.10.
Not a bad deal.
Incredible. Didn't we take that out of the budget you've already been authorized with?
Hey, I don't know if I can say that, but I will say that if that's all I'd have to lose because this equipment's quite substantially more.
I agree.
One thing about the grant program that I didn't want to point out from the is we are now, since we started applying for them, since since I got here, I guess, but we are $923,823 is what we receive from that program.
No kidding.
It's a great testament. The city's share of that is 109,000. So the city goes, we can't do it. The city's share of that is $109,000, so the city goes, we can't do it without the city's backing and the residents' backing, so.
Can't do it without your going after them.
And you're not retiring until we hit that million-dollar mark, right?
If I count the other cities that I've helped, I'm over the million, so. But I don't know about the retirement part, because I think we know that's coming, but nevertheless.
It could be a condition of the motion.
But I would ask for the ability to accept it so we can move on.
If there are no other questions, I'd make a motion to approve acceptance of the 2020 Assistance to Firefighter Grant, number 2020FG 12353, for rescue, extrication equipment and thermal imaging camera, and authorization for matching funds not to exceed $2,138.10.
Second. Have the motion in the second to accept this award. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thanks for all of your work.
Next item on here is consideration of check 118023 to C Squared Signs. We always call these out, because Mr. Campbell's a council member. Will we be able to pass this with two members, Ethan, tonight?
Yeah, as previous actions have shown, I believe Brad can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the majority of the assembled quorum.
Okay. Well, I'd make a motion to approve check number 118023 to C Square for $252 and approve ordinance number 2021-AP-16A.
Second. Got the motion in the second to approve this check to C Squared Sign. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
I can't do that.
It abstained, but I heard the aye from Sam at Mike, so we're good. Well, the next item on our agenda is an executive session, which I would entertain the motion for now.
Oh, sorry, it should be eight o'clock. To come back. I said at the end, to come back at eight o'clock. Left that blank, I'm sorry.
I move City Hallstead City Council recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss pending litigation consultation with, pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the Attorney/Client Relationship Exception, KSA 754319B2, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, city manager, city attorney, and open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 8:00 PM.
Second.
Have the motion in the second to move into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We will move into executive session, counsel.
We're going to go to the room on the end, right, Ethan?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Jimmy.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we'll move on to our next section and that's the report section. I'll start with the governing body first. Sam, do you have anything this evening?
No sir, I don't.
Nope, I'm good.
Ed? Just a safe, happy Old Settlers to everybody. I think it went good. I want to shout out to the city employees that helped out, and especially to the Old Settlers staff that worked countless hours on putting an event together. So, thank you very much.
I concur, and if they did have any problems, I didn't notice them. Everything seemed to flow pretty well. We'll move on to the manager report. That'll be you, Ethan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pretty short this evening as Old Settlers and budget was taking up a lot of time these last couple weeks. So first just want to thank all the Old Settlers committee volunteers, the community groups, and then the city staff of course for all their work this year for Old Settlers. By all accounts, it was a great and much enjoyed event bringing people to the city. It's just great to see it back after the previous year where we had to tone it down. So, thank you everyone, and thank you to the city staff. Work continues on catching up and continuing to reconcile the city books. And then recently, I attended the virtual White House briefing on the American Rescue Plan Act which shed more light on the allowable uses for the ARPA funds that the city has applied for and received. I also attended the executive committee meeting for the Kansas Municipal Gas Agency, met with Harlem Four Acre on several of our pending projects for the city, and then went to the board meeting for the Public Wholesale Water Supply District Number 17 with our representative city superintendent Adams. Work continues by that public wholesale board to draft a new agreement between the forming partners of it, and Willie will share more information as we have it. I will just tell you that most likely we were looking at either, you know, some sort of work session or joint meeting that we would ask you all to attend. That way we can, you know, talk to the cities of Newton, Cedric, North Newton, and Holst at all at one time as opposed to taking two months to go one by one to one to all the meetings. So, that'll probably be off of our normal meeting cycle. But, you know, there's been a lot of work going into this and hopefully you guys will be supporting those changes. Other than that, we did receive our grant funding for the storm siren and we have started to receive some of the reimbursements back for the Safe Routes to Schools. So, storm siren grant is done now that we've received that matching funds back. And hopefully this coming in about a week, we will have our final meeting on the Safe Routes to School and the draft plan and get that back in front of you all to look at. So, awesome.
Sounds good. Any questions, council? If not, I would, that finishes our agenda and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you, council.